I believe it's been recommended that we move item 19 Z 16-07, the wireless communication, that's being requested for a continuous to January, to the consent agenda. And it's also been requested to move item 22 up further into the agenda. I'm thinking we can probably do that one.
Do you want to move 22 up?
I was going to do that one after communications from citizens. So Councilwoman Peterson's around in case anybody's here to speak out and then she can hear those items.
We need to know if this affected 10, which is on consent right now.
Okay, so we do have an addendum up here for item 10?
So we want to pull that off and talk about that. We may fly through it, but let's go ahead and do it.
Okay, let me get Linda's attention. Linda? We have an addendum here for item 10. And item 10 is on consent? Do we need to pull that one off?
Chairman, you can just read the change that you accept the addendum received tonight for item number 10.
Okay.
You got that?
Okay. Call to order, Town of Gilbert, regular, planning commission, regular meeting. All right. Is there any other changes to the agenda that we need to make? First item is roll call. All right.
Chairman Christopher Sipple. Vice Chairman Brian Anderson.
Not hearing anything more. Here.
Commissioner Carl Bloomfield.
Here.
Commissioner David Cavaney.
Here.
Commissioner Greg Froelich.
Here.
Commissioner Brian Johns.
Here.
Commissioner Joshua Ailer.
Recession, study session.
Here.
Does everybody want to take a five-minute break or do you want to just keep rolling
Alternate Commissioner Seth Fonda.
Present.
and jump into it?
Alternate Commissioner Daniel Sepuentes.
Let's take a break.
We'll take a five-minute break and kick this off at 6:20.
Here.
Thank you. So we're going to make some changes to the agenda for tonight and shift some stuff around. We'll be moving item 19 Z 16-07, wireless communication. It's being requested for a continuous to the January 3, 2018 hearing to consent. We'll be moving item 22 up to happen after item 7. Was there any other modifications that I missed?
Well, we're going to address the addendum on 10. I think if not moving it, so that's fine.
Okay. All right. So is there approval of the agenda?
So, so moved to?
So from Commissioner Bloomfield, second.
Second.
Commissioner Johns, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Approved. Next is item 7, communications from citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters within jurisdiction of the town, but not on the agenda. The commission board response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. See anyone from the public that would like to address the council at this time? Not seeing any, we will move along to the public hearing consent. For everybody that's here right now, I'd like to just give you a heads up. If you're here to talk about another item that is on the public hearing, there's yellow cards in the back room. If you could please fill one out and hand it to the front desk, I would appreciate that.
I forget 22.
Oh, sorry, thank you. So we'll move along to 22. Council liaison on current offense.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I apologize for asking to have my time moved to the beginning of the agenda. I am quadruple booked this evening, so I'm trying to make the most of my evening and visit with you and then be off to my next event. Couple items that I'd like to share with you are the Riparian After Dark event are coming up on December 8 and December 9, and December 15 and 16. Each night is dedicated to a different cause, so if you check our website for those and go out and visit the Riparian After Dark for the holidays, it's a great time. Obviously located at the Riparian Preserve at Water Ranch at 2757 East Guadalupe Road behind the regional library. And it runs from 5:30 to 9:00, Friday night, Saturday night, this weekend, and next weekend. The other thing that I wanted to share with you is Saturday morning, the Gilbert Fire and Rescue Department will be doing rides with Santa in front of Walmart on Market Street. And Santa will be there to take pictures and do the rides in the fire engine. And that's from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. And they'd like you to bring a toy to donate, an unwrapped toy, clothing, or bring a donation to them there for those rides. Another item that we have to share is talking about Alex. And she's new with the Town of Gilbert. She is, the way that she's going to connect you to Gilbert's open data portal. And if you would like more information about that, please visit our website because they have a great little demo online to tell you all about Alex and how she's going to help you reach into all of the information and data stored in the Town of Gilbert that you can use in your businesses or just at home for information that you'd like to know about Gilbert. And with that, I would like to thank you for, again, for letting me change my time. Have a productive meeting this evening, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and I will see you in January. Thank you.
Thank you, and a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to you. Thank you for everything you do for us. Now we will move along to the public hearing consent items. All items listed below are considered consent calendar items and may be approved by a single motion unless removed by the request of the commission board for further discussion action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. The following items are item 8, DR 17-118 Holiday Inn Express. Item 9, GP 17-1008 Watermark at Gateway Place. Item 10, GP 17-1009 Lion's Gate Apartments with an addendum that has been handed tonight. Does that satisfy that putting in, or do I need to read the items? Thank you. Item 11, GP 17-1000 Anatole. Item 12, DR 17-1104, DR 07157 E Skyline Steel Site. Item 13, DR 17-1121 True Hotel by Hilton and Conceptual Master Plan. Item 14, DR 17-1123 Ray Road Storage. Item 15, DR 17-1132 Bridges Ward. Item 16, UP 17-1034 Heritage District Parking Garage. And item 19, Z 16-07 Wireless Communication Facilities. Is there anyone on the commission that needs to declare a conflict with what's been read?
I have a conflict on item number 9, Watermark at Gateway Place.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Cavaney, will you please?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chairman. So I move to approve, first, because of the conflict, item 9 or GP 17-1008 Watermark at Gateway Place?
Second. Second by Commissioner Ailer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
Vice Chairman, I move to approve the following cases. DR 17-118 Holiday Inn Express, that's item 8. Item 10, GP 17-1009 for the Lion's Gate Apartments with the addendum provided to the commission tonight. Item 11, GP 17-1000 Anatole. Item 12, DR 17-1104 Skyline Steel Site Improvements. Item 13, DR 17-1121 True Hotel by Hilton. Item 14, DR 17-1123 Ray Road Storage. Item 15, DR 17-1132 Bridges Ward. Item 16, UP 17-1034 for the Heritage District Parking Garage 2. And item 19, Z 16-07 Wireless Communication Facilities.
Thank you, is there a second?
Just clarification, 19's being continued. We're approving the continuance.
No, we're consenting to approve, yeah. Okay, clarification, item 19 to be continued to the January 3 meeting.
Chairman and Commissioner Cavaney, do we need to also include on items 10 and 11 the companion cases, zoning cases?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Thank you. So I amend my motion to include, under item 10, Z 17-1017 Lion's Gate Apartments, and under item 11, the additional portion zoning case of Z 17-1003 Anatole. Thank you.
Thank you for catching that. Do we have everything now?
Yeah. I second the motion.
Second by Commissioner Cavaney. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Passes. Now we'll move along to public hearing non-consent items. Non-consent public hearing items will be heard at an individual public hearing and will be acted upon by the commission board by a separate motion. During the public hearings, anyone wishing to comment in support of or in opposition to a public hearing item may do so. If you wish to comment on a public hearing item, you must fill out a public comment form indicating the item number on which you wish to be heard. Once the hearing is closed, there will be no further public comment unless requested by a member of the commission board. First item is item 17, UP 17-1035 Copper Springs East. Catherine.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Catherine Lorbeer, Principal Planner. The public hearing item tonight is a request for a conditional use permit to operate a behavioral health hospital in the general office zoning district. To help get us oriented, the site is located within the Val Vista Medical Growth Area. And this growth area is just south of the 202. It's bounded on the west side by Val Vista and on the east side by Greenfield Road and to the south Queen Creek. So Mercy Gilbert Hospital is, has been the economic catalyst in this growth area. And from that catalyst, we've seen other uses start to come in, meaning medical offices, rehab facilities, medical research, and care facilities. The town does anticipate that this area will continue to grow in this manner where you'll see more medical office, general office, and also business park land uses, supported by mixed-use commercial and hospitality uses. The subject site is zone general office with a planned area development overlay. And you'll see adjacent on all four sides is the same zoning, general office with the PAD. The proposed development encompasses five separate parcels that are vacant, and the total acreage is 7.6. There are no budding residential areas to this site. This is the aerial view where you can see Mercy Hospital to the north, about a quarter of a mile. And also, directly north of the site, you'll see there's a vacant parcel, and then the Oaks Assisted Living Facility. To the west is also a developed site, which is the center at Val Vista, which is a skilled nursing and physical rehab center. The east and to the south, as you can see, are currently vacant. So the project is a request for a use permit for a behavioral health hospital. And hospitals do require approval of the use permit in general office. So they are proposing to do a new single-story building. The first phase will have 72 beds and be about 15,000 square feet. And Phase 2, if needed, will add an additional 24 beds and about 11,000 square feet. Copper Springs only accepts voluntary patients, which means the individual must have the capacity to decide for themselves to seek treatment. The average length of inpatient stay is about eight days. And the hospital will offer a broad continuum of care with a full treatment team. They'll have a 24/7 local intake program, and similar to other hospitals, they'll have patient visiting hours. So this project is running concurrently with a design review, which, for the building elevations, site design, landscaping, et cetera. And that, we have completed first review of that portion of the application. This is the site plan, which you can see Phase 2 is in the upper northeast corner. The main access will be off of Melrose to the south. And you have a secondary access point off of Rome. And then along the east side, there is an access easement, which does offer some additional opportunities for light truck delivery. The majority of the site improvements will occur in Phase 1. And as I mentioned, the 72 beds, the 15,000 square feet, and about 220 parking spaces, which is quite considerable. I included the floor plan, just for reference, so that you can see that the north portion of the building, which is kind of that yellow, golden-yellow, is the nursing suite. So that is the inpatient area. And then in the southwest corner of the building, you'll see the gray area. That is the outpatient. And then there's a darker blue area when you come into the building, and that's for the entrance and for administration. And then the green is the dining suite. And we will certainly go into this in more detail when we bring you the design review. Some of the notable features of the site is, at the main entrance there, you'll see there's a large courtyard. And also, in the inpatient area, there are three secured courtyards, so the patients can enjoy those areas. And this, again, is a rendering that you'll see again in the design review, just to give you a sense of that entry area. In order to approve a conditional use permit, the project needs to meet four findings of fact. And Page 5 in your staff report details the reasons why staff is in support of this request. We believe that there are complementary uses in the vicinity, that the hospital will significantly address a gap in services that has been identified in recent needs assessments. The site is well-suited for a hospital, and it's in the Val Vista Medical Growth Area. The site plan and the building design will, must meet all the requirements of the Land Development Code. And the project will provide vital behavioral health services to the community and enhance economic activity in this area. So staff is recommending that you make the findings of fact and approve Copper Springs East, subject to the condition listed above. Now, I did want to mention that your packet does have 11 letters of support for the project. We also received one phone call today from a business to the north that was interested in knowing more about the site, about the project design. And we also received one phone call from a resident who lives nearby and expressed some concerns about the school, which is a half-mile away, and the lack of perimeter walls on the site. So I'm happy to answer any questions. The applicant is also here to field any questions about the building, the hospital design, its operations, and the services it provides. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Catherine. Does anybody on the commission have any comments or questions for staff? Commissioner Ailer?
Just have a quick question of, you had mentioned the school. Where is it located? And you said a half-mile, but...
A half-mile to the west.
So it's Campo Verde?
Yes.
Okay. And the elementary school to the north?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Catherine, I do have a question for you. So the 11 letters of support, what, how close are they vicinity to the site?
A lot of, those letters, as you will see, are from other service providers that are interested and provide, and I think the applicant, it's probably best to give you some feedback on the outreach that they've done and why those letters were provided.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so if you don't have anything further for staff, we'll open up the public hearing to the public. As the applicant here, I'd like to make a presentation. You'll have 10 minutes. And please state your name and state of residence for the record, please.
Adam Baugh, 25, 25 East, Arizona, Biltmore Circle. Here on behalf of Copper Springs East. I would submit that this is a very timely discussion, particularly given some of the events that have occurred nationally and locally. And there's been a lot of, I think, improvement in the discussion regarding these behavioral health types of facilities. There's been a greater awareness and understanding of the necessity. I think there's probably no time better than the present. But at the same time, there still exists a certain stigma with these uses. Understandably so, unless you deal with it on your own first personal account basis, you probably don't know how prevalent, how great the need is. In fact, I certainly understand in many cases, and you'll probably hear some of that tonight, the misconceptions that are often associated with this use. I hope to dispel some of that. I understand, though, that probably I won't be able to answer all questions, although I'll do my best. And if there's anything remaining, I have Alexis with me from the development team, who can help me with some of these comments. So I've structured my presentation this way, because I think this is a natural flow and should answer many of the comments and questions that you have today. First of all, behavioral health, that is both substance abuse and mental health issues. It's not only just the treatment of it, but sometimes it involves the prevention of it. And in the state of Arizona, there's both state agencies that accredit this and federal agencies. This type of facility has regular audits and even self semi-annual audits, and even unknown, unannounced audits that come to this facility. But at the end of the day, this is really about treating two things. Substance abuse, things like alcohol and drug dependence, and mental health, things like depression, anxiety, OCD, anger, and I'll cover some of those things later on. So the first part I'd like to get into is, is there a need, and why is there a need for this? Nationally, here are some of the statistics for mental health and for substance abuse. But I want to zero in more particularly and specifically in Gilbert. You see, there's this manual that was produced by the Town of Gilbert in cooperation with local police, fire, schools, and church and faith group leaders, to deal with particularly this specific issue. As a result of a prior attempt in 2013 and 2014, a different facility was proposed, and it wasn't successful. I think it had the wrong approach, the wrong leadership, and clearly the wrong location. At the time, they left, and they went to Avondale, and they're here back again today. But the town learned some things too from that, and they realized they needed to control and better understand the discussion, which evolved into that book today. And so in 2014, the Town of Gilbert did a needs assessment. And that needs assessment was very clear. And I covered a lot of this in last month's presentation. I realize there's some people in the audience who probably weren't aware of this before, so I wanted to just repeat some of these things. But the needs assessment was a document and a study prepared by the Town of Gilbert. And the number-one need in the Town of Gilbert are families in crisis and behavioral health issues. It's a true epidemic, and sometimes it's often unknown and often unseen, so in many cases, we think it doesn't exist. But clearly... And hospitals do require approval of the use permit in general office. So they are proposing to do a new single-story building. The first phase will have 72 beds and be about 15,000 square feet. And Phase Two, if needed, will add an additional 24 beds and about 11,000 square feet. Copper Springs only accepts voluntary patients, which means the individual must have the capacity to decide for themselves to seek treatment. The average length of inpatient stay is about eight days. And the hospital will offer a broad continuum of care with a full treatment team. They'll have a 24/7 local intake program. And similar to other hospitals, they'll have patient visiting hours. So this project is running concurrently with a design review, which for the building elevations, site design landscaping, et cetera. And we have completed first review of that portion of the application. This is the site plan, which you can see Phase Two is in the upper northeast corner. The main access will be off of Melrose to the south. And you have a secondary access point off of Rome. And then along the east side, there is an access easement, which does offer some additional opportunities for light truck delivery. The majority of the site improvements will occur in Phase One. And as I mentioned, the 72 beds, the 15,000 square feet, and about 220 parking spaces, which is quite considerable. I included the floor plan just for reference so that you can see that the north portion of the building, which is kind of that yellow, golden-yellow, is the nursing suite. So that is the inpatient area. And then in the southwest corner of the building, you'll see the gray area. That is the outpatient. And then there's a darker blue area when you come into the building. And that's for the entrance and for administration. And then the green is the dining suite. And we will certainly go into this in more detail when we bring you the design review. Some of the notable features of the site is at the main entrance there, you'll see there's a large courtyard. And also in the inpatient area, there are three secured courtyards so the patients can enjoy those areas. And this again is a rendering that you'll see again in the design review, just to give you a sense of that entry area. In order to approve a conditional use permit, the project needs to meet four findings of fact. And Page Five in your staff report details the reasons why staff is in support of this request. We believe that there are complementary uses in the vicinity, that the hospital will significantly address a gap in services that has been identified in recent needs assessments. The site is well-suited for a hospital and it's in the Val Vista Medical Growth Area. The site plan and the building design must meet all the requirements of the Land Development Code. And the project will provide vital behavioral health services to the community and enhance economic activity in this area. So staff is recommending that you make the findings of fact and approve Copper Springs East, subject to the condition listed above. Now, I did want to mention that your packet does have 11 letters of support for the project. We also received one phone call today from a business to the north that was interested in knowing more about the site, about the project design. And we also received one phone call from a resident who lives nearby and expressed some concerns about the school, which is a half-mile away, and the lack of perimeter walls on the site. So I'm happy to answer any questions. The applicant is also here to field any questions about the building, the hospital design, its operations, and the services it provides. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Catherine. Does anybody on the commission have any comments or questions for staff? Commissioner Ayala?
Just have a quick question of you had mentioned the school. Where is it located? You said a half-mile, but...
A half-mile to the west.
So it's Campo Verde?
Yes.
Okay. And the elementary school to the north?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Catherine, I do have a question for you. So the 11 letters of support, how close are they vicinity to the site?
A lot of... Those letters, as you will see, are from other service providers that are interested and provide... And I think the applicant is probably best to give you some feedback on the outreach that they've done and why those letters were provided.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so if you don't have anything further for staff, we'll open up the public hearing to the public. As the applicant here, I'd like to make a presentation. You'll have 10 minutes. And please state your name and state of residence for the record, please.
Adam Baugh, 2525 East Arizona, Biltmore Circle, here on behalf of Copper Springs East. I would submit that this is a very timely discussion, particularly given some of the events that have occurred nationally and locally. And there's been a lot of, I think, improvement in the discussion regarding these behavioral health types of facilities. There's been a greater awareness and understanding of the necessity. I think there's probably no time better than the present. But at the same time, there still exists a certain stigma with these uses. Understandably so, unless you deal with it on your own first personal account basis, you probably don't know how prevalent, how great the need is. In fact, I certainly understand in many cases, and you'll probably hear some of that tonight, the misconceptions that are often associated with this use. I hope to dispel some of that. I understand, though, that probably I won't be able to answer all questions, although I'll do my best. And if there's anything remaining, I have Alexis with me from the development team who can help me with some of these comments. So I've structured my presentation this way because I think this is a natural flow and should answer many of the comments and questions that you have today. First of all, behavioral health, that is both substance abuse and mental health issues. It's not only just the treatment of it, but sometimes it involves the prevention of it. And in the state of Arizona, there's both state agencies that accredit this and federal agencies. This type of facility has regular audits and even self semi-annual audits and even unknown, unannounced audits that come to this facility. But at the end of the day, this is really about treating two things. Substance abuse, things like alcohol and drug dependence and mental health, things like depression, anxiety, OCD, anger, and I'll cover some of those things later on. So the first part I'd like to get into is, is there a need? Why is there a need for this? Nationally, here are some of the statistics for mental health and for substance abuse. But I want to zero in more particularly and specifically in Gilbert. You see, there's this manual that was produced by the town of Gilbert in cooperation with local police, fire, schools, and church and faith group leaders to deal with particularly this specific issue. As a result of a prior attempt in 2013 and 2014, a different facility was proposed and it wasn't successful. I think it had the wrong approach, the wrong leadership, and clearly the wrong location. At the time, they left and they went to Avondale, and they're here back again today. But the town learned some things too from that. And they realized they needed to control and better understand the discussion, which evolved into that book today. And so in 2014, the town of Gilbert did a needs assessment. And that needs assessment was very clear. And I covered a lot of this in last month's presentation. I realize there's some people in the audience who probably weren't aware of this before, so I wanted to just repeat some of these things. But the needs assessment was a document and a study prepared by the town of Gilbert. And the number-one need in the town of Gilbert were families in crisis and behavioral health issues. It's a true epidemic. And sometimes it's often unknown and often unseen, so in many cases, we think it doesn't exist. But clearly, as the results of this needs assessment show, there is a true need. And often, I think this highlights it best. These are your neighbors, your church members, the PTA mom, this is your coworker. And in my own personal experience, it's touched my own family. There was some recommendations that came out of that study, though. And there's a statement here that said, boy, there was a good opportunity that was perhaps missed previously, an opportunity that was proposed at two other locations. As I mentioned before, wrong site, wrong approach. But nonetheless, there was a true need. And those two recommendations that came out of here was that the community should take a better and more responsive, active approach in the needs of this type of use and identifying facilities that can treat and provide this type of service. And then the fifth recommendation was to provide better awareness. So that way, the discussion was more neutral and more realistic rather than some of the stigma that had unfortunately been attached to it. Mercy Gilbert has a requirement to perform a needs assessment themselves once every three years. So in 2016, they performed their own needs assessment study. And they looked at a couple of things. I broke it down into three areas: mental health, substance abuse, and suicide. And mental health was one of the top leading issues. In fact, when you talk to the hospital, and I think there'll be somebody here tonight that may share a comment or two from their own personal experience. But these types of treatments and these needs unfortunately occupy emergency room department space without the right facilities or treatments to treat that. And it's not as an easy problem just to kick somebody out. You have to find an opening somewhere else. And so they occupy space that is probably better suited for other needs, true emergencies. Substance abuse is another thing. I highlighted this once before, but it seemed like every other day you hear something on KTR or on the radio or online about the opioid epidemic in Arizona. And that first stat is a true stat. That came out of a study released by the governor of Arizona. But the Mercy Gilbert community assessment showed that alcohol and drug dependence are one of the highest priorities and one of the biggest problems they see. This affects both adults and youth. And some of the most frequently cited things are methamphetamines, prescriptions, heroin, even regular opioids. Suicide is a clear and present issue that's of great concern for the town. Unfortunately, you see more people suffer through depression, sometimes suffer through other illnesses, or sometimes substance abuse that leads into suicide. So if you can tackle the first two, you can probably have a better chance of tackling the third. But these are facts that come out of the town of Gilbert, excuse me, the Mercy Gilbert Needs Assessment Study. We had a chance, what's made it a little bit different between 2013 and 2014 is there's actually a facility that's been opened by the operator here out in Avondale. And this facility's on McDowell and 107th Avenue. But the reason why I share this is because of our experience over there, we sort of have a better insight on how Gilbert operates, how the state operates. And we found some data that's backed up the need to come back to the East Valley. We have referral sources that come from both a variety of municipalities in the East Valley, but even a variety of hospitals are here in the East Valley and many patients that we have to turn away because of distance. And people who come back for regular outpatient treatment find it difficult to make that commute out to Avondale regularly. So our facility's here planned on Rome Street and Melrose Street. Catherine touched on it, and I don't need to spend too much time about the specifics of it, but it's in total a 96-bed facility over about seven acres. It includes both inpatient and outpatient. I want to be clear, though, this is a voluntary hospital only. This is not an institution. It's not a prison. Someone who will self-admit themselves and has an opportunity also self-discharge as well, unless there's a certain protocol or procedure in place to make sure that they're not a risk or a danger. And at that point, there's some other procedures that I can get into if necessary. But the facility provides both inpatient outpatient treatment, clinicians, doctors, nurses, et cetera. These are the types of conditions that are treated here at this facility. These are things that I think you'll find, you probably know somebody who suffered through something like this. There's, I think, in my own experience, something related to some type of degree of shame because it's hard to admit that things aren't always right. You try your best to continue on, but at some point, somebody decides, I need some help. And these are the kind of things that we can treat here at our facility. We have a full scope of services. We don't feel like it's appropriate to have just one part without having the other because you're not truly solving the problem. So inpatient evolves into an outpatient. It's an aggressive outpatient that evolves into a moderate outpatient that evolves into a less aggressive outpatient to a scale on a period of six to eight months, perhaps even longer. But the point is, if you just do inpatient only and that's it, you're not really able to truly solve the problem. And we believe in this full scope of services and this continuum of care. There's a patient intake process that comes in and somebody will, upon being entered, within 15 minutes, will have a chance to meet with a physician or a provider who will be able to do an intake analysis and determine what their needs are and if they're appropriate. Not everybody needs to be intake. And some people can receive simply outpatient treatment. But there's a series of processes. And once someone self-admits, then we walk them through the process. We see this as a journey on their recovery. We see them as guests in this facility. And we hope to work together and partner together with them in their wholesome treatment. As a result, some of these things that we have here are therapist and doctor office and particular types of recovery treatments and therapies, things related to pet therapy or art therapy. Sometimes there's counseling. Sometimes there's some detox that involves somebody who's coming in on an inpatient. But we have a number of security protocols in place as well, both on the exterior and the interior, camera monitoring, panic buttons, security buttons on every employee. There's so many mechanisms in place to make sure that this is not only a place of treatment for these people, but also a place of safety and security. So I guess the come-downs of this, when you have a CUP, you need to prove yourself, why this app, why this location, why this area? And I'd love to kind of just get into the specifics of it. As you can see here on the map, here's the property. But more importantly, you've got to ask yourself, where in the town of Gilbert are hospitals allowed to locate? Well, you can go in a commercial area, in a regional commercial, general commercial district. In fact, that was the attempts before previously. And in those locations, you don't need a use permit. Or you can go to a general office or business park area, in which case, in a general office, you do need a use permit. Or you can go to a public facilities district. In this case, we're in a general office area, so we need a use permit. What's interesting here, though, is we're in an area that's called the Val Vista Medical Growth Area. This is the area and the specific area that's intended for these types of uses, things related to medical health and facilities and providers. It's no surprise that you have things like the VA Hospital, Mercy Gilbert Hospital Rehab Facilities, Assisted Living Facilities, and other medical service providers in the area. There's been a lot of effort for site planning and infrastructure that's gone into place to create this very specific type of area. And I asked, ask myself, if you can't go here, then arguably, there's probably no other place that you'd go in the town of Gilbert for this type of use. So the CUP has a couple of very specific standards. Ms. Anderson, may I wrap up with three minutes' time?
Absolutely, yes.
The findings are real simple, and there are really just four findings. And the first part is, is there any detrimental to health, safety, general welfare of the people living or the property adjacent to this area? This is an office area. This is a medical campus area. This is exactly the type of area where a hospital should be allowed to locate. There's a true need and a gap in the services as evidenced in those two studies. And most important, I think, as it relates to public safety and health, we've had a chance to cooperate, work together with your local police and fire, understand what their concerns are. They gave us a list, I think, five pages of questions. We spent a lot of time analyzing them, but we could pull real data, real facts from the Avondale facility. And then they checked on us. So it wasn't just lip service, but they could verify themselves and came back with a glowing report on our cooperation with the local police and fire and lack of incidents out there. The second part here is that it has to conform with the intents and policies of the general plan, which I've highlighted on already. It's in your staff report. There's a number of goals that have been highlighted and specified in there. But most important, your general plan specifically calls this as a medical campus area. The third finding here is that, does it conform to all those requirements of the state, local, federal law? Clearly, it does. This is a hospital use. It's allowed in the general office district. Hospitals are defined in the code by, I just underlined it, as inpatient physical or behavioral health services. These are the types of uses that are allowed in this area. And this site fully conforms with all your development standard requirements. And of course, at some point prior to opening, we'll obtain all the necessary licensing. Finally, the fourth and the final element of this test is that it won't and reasonably interfere with use enjoyment of nearby properties. And because this is a medical campus area and because this is an office setting, and clearly, there's vacant land around us, but at some point, those will be developed, there'll be a number of buffers in place that make this an appropriate area. And there is no abutting residential. While I certainly understand there's residential about 600 to 700 feet away, at the end of the day, this is a secured and licensed facility. And the one in the Avondale, for example, has operated in very identical conditions. In fact, I tell you that the residential next to Avondale is only 100 feet away. That's it. And apartments are 400 feet away. And there's vacant land around us. And in this case, it's almost identical set, but with greater distances. I think there's a comment you'll hear later on about schools and proximity to schools. I want to make it clear, under the town of Gilbert's zone ordinance, this facility can operate immediately next door to a school today if it needed to and if it was appropriately zoned. There is no spacing requirement from a school, but nonetheless, we are a half-a-mile away from a school. And I will also point out that in our Avondale facility, we're at a distance even closer to a school than here, yet with no issues or problems. This is a map that sort of illustrates the proximity that I just referred to before. The Pendergrass Elementary is 200 to 300 feet away. One thing that's important, what's changed since now and before, was previously, there were sites that I don't know were in the best interest of the town or the community. But more importantly, there was a lot of concern about certain types of behaviors and whether they would be treated there, things related to voyeurism or pedophilia or exhibitionism. And the town did some things in cooperation with the neighbors. They adopted a new code ordinance. And that said, if you treat those types of behavioral health disorders, you need a different type of use permit. And more importantly, you need to be 1,500 feet away from a school. We've put in our narrative, it's been in the staff report as well, that we don't treat those types of conditions that have been addressed. But most important, we are far, far away from any schools, even if we were one of those types of facilities. There's been a number of letters of supports. Those letters of supports have come from both people within the town and outside of town. I understood that there might be a question about the integrity of the operator. And so we had a chance to get letters of support from those who we've partnered with in the West Valley, like police and fire and local jurisdictions and municipalities. We've also partnered with other healthcare providers who have found the benefit of this service. So some of those letters are highlighted in your packet. Including those are people from the East Valley Behavioral Health Coalition, a group that was established by the former mayor to specifically discuss and vet the discussion here. Included in that packet is a letter from your Gilbert Chamber of Commerce of Support. Included in that packet is a letter from your former mayor, John Lewis. Included in that packet also letters from local service providers here in the town of Gilbert, doctors as well as outpatient providers. So at the end of the day, you have to come back and go, well, why Gilbert? Well, I'll tell you, why not Gilbert? There's no reason why we don't have the same impacts, the same concerns that affect other communities across the valley. Because you might not see it firsthand, doesn't mean it doesn't exist. But there is a true need. It's been evidenced by the behavioral health studies. It's been evidenced by the needs assessments. And I think from the people that you hear from today, I'm happy to answer any questions. I know I've been rushed to get as much information as I can, but clearly, would love to have a few minutes on the backside, if possible, for rebuttal to answer or clarify any comments.
All right, thank you. I know there are some questions that the commission probably does have for you, so I'll open it up to that.
I did also want to declare another conflict for this one.
Okay, Commissioner Cavani?
Thank you. Adam, you know, we've had a chance to hear this in a study session and appreciate the additional information tonight. I'm not sure if I shared last time, but I actually had a son who was in need of a behavioral health center here within about a year and a half ago. And there were no beds in Gilbert, no beds anywhere near us. We had to put him in a place northwest Phoenix, over an hour from our home. And we visited him every day. It was a trial. But I do agree, the need is here for something like this. And I do like that this placement in the medical growth area is where the decision has been to place it. I do support that because I think it is an ideal place for it with all the other medical around. I know there are some concerns and fears about the types of patrons that come to these. But I'm bolstered by the concept that it is a voluntary entry. And I think that's a little different than the center my son went to. And in that case, they did have, you know, a little bit more security, that kind of thing. And I'm not sure what kind of security, maybe you can address that. But this is much different, I think, than the one my son was at. So I'm not troubled by the connection. And also, I've seen the Avondale facility as well, and I think you've done a great job there, or the applicant did a great job there. From everything I've read in the packet, is functioning as a model citizen in that town or in that city. So I don't really have any questions other than perhaps, you know, is there security and how does that work? But otherwise, I think it's a good fit.
Alexis, will you join me up here? I can address the security. Would you like me to address that now, Commissioner Cavani? So we do have some security protocols in place that includes both a monitor in evening hours. One of the things I like about the facility is they have these scan codes. So as they do patrols, they have to scan these different sites so they know and register when someone's completed patrol of a particular area. And they have a certain number of times, how often they have to do that. But let me turn over to Alexis Barron. I'm just the zoning guy. I don't know everything, and I've learned so much about this business in a short time. But Alexis runs the facility out in Avondale and can speak better to the security operations out there.
Is my address or help?
Yeah, you should give your address. Okay.
I'm Alexis Barron. My address is 4413 North 35th Street in Phoenix. And so as for security, we, like you said, we do have a security patrol that goes around in the evenings that does check over the evenings, just to make sure that there's no issues with that. We also have a locked facility as a behavioral one hospital that is a requirement. So we have locked doors throughout the hospital, which we are key padded. We have cameras everywhere, inside and outside of the facility, to watch things that are going on. And as well, it's the voluntary, so people that come in just want to be there. And then there is a procedure for discharge still on that voluntary aspect. So we don't have police or anything like that, but we work with the police and fire as necessary with the community.
Thank you very much.
Is there any further questions for the applicant at this time? Thank you very much for your presentation. I do have quite a few cards here of people from the public that would like to address this case. First person is Larry Wolf. And Becky Wolf would like to donate her time to Larry. So Larry, if you're here, if you can please come up to the podium. And Larry, I'll allow you four minutes for your comments. Everybody else, after that, I'll allow two minutes. We do have quite a few comments here. On deck after Larry would be Jerry Noble. So Jerry, if you could please move to the front of the room, it would be appreciated.
Do you need to use this? Oh, thank you. Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, my name is Larry Wolf, and I'm the owner of the 2.5 acres directly adjacent to the site. I am deeply troubled, concerned about this development and the impact it will have in the area. If this project is approved, it will dramatically diminish the value of my land and limit my ability to develop or sell my own property. Of any property on the area, I feel I am the one most directly impacted by this project. The facility will house a transient population, whether they have to be there or walk in there or the court tells them they have to go there, there's still a transient population, many of which are many unstable, drug users, abusers, and some even have criminal records. Some of these patients will be dropped off and picked up, allowing them time and opportunity to loiter, prowl, and generally cause trouble or concern in the neighborhood. This is the wrong location for this type of project. When you bring people with mental issues or drug-related problems into community, there are potential consequences, I'm sorry, consequences, some of them dangerous. We have witnessed a growing national crisis pertaining to violence and mass shootings perpetrated by individuals clearly suffering from mental issues. You could potentially be inviting similar consequences in this neighborhood. Adam said in his little speech a minute ago that there's been many issues nationally already, so why bring this uncertainty into our neighborhood? The developer will claim this as a high-end facility, which he has, that commands significant pricing and patients with considerable means. But be reminded that the perpetrator in Vegas was a millionaire. Socioeconomic means has little bearing on individual propensity for crime, violence, drugs, or any other type of crime. In addition, I don't believe the public notification process was properly followed. I have been in contact with hundreds of residents in the neighborhood. And they're, again, 600 to 700 feet away, but there are a lot of residents there. And everybody I had spoke to is against this proposal. These residents were never notified by the city nor the developer. And so they didn't know anything about this project until we went door-to-door and talked to them. I was told specifically by the original city planner that there would be two planning meetings, which if they did occur, we were not made aware of. The only thing we've been made aware of is this meeting and the original meeting to the general public at a church with about seven days' notice, which we were not able to make. But I actually called the city planners and told them that we were in opposition and we couldn't be there. It is important to mention, and which it's already been mentioned, obviously, that Camp Verde High School is less than a mile away. Perry High School is about a mile to the south of the site. Quartz Elementary School is a half-mile from the site. Mariposa Assisted Living Facility is just next door to the school. The Oaks Senior Living Facility is literally next door to the site with 134 residents and immediate access to pharmaceuticals and other narcotics. All these people are, senior people are vulnerable, and they should be protected. This is a protected population, seniors. I am not opposed to this In fact, I spoke with an off-duty police officer who lives in the neighborhood, who has received numerous emails from his neighbors, who are scared and afraid of the consequences of this project. Can I have one more statement?
You can have one more statement.
Thank you. The town of Gilbert has good sense to reject the two projects earlier that he talked about. And the project should be denied and rejected for the same reason. I ask that you consider the many voices of the nearby property owners, business owners, and neighborhood people, and prevent this project from moving forward. And I'd like to give you these statements of opposition.
If you can hand them over to the staff at the table here, please. And thank you very much for your time. Jerry Noble, on deck, is Derek, excuse me for messing up your name, Rochark? Thank you. If you can move up front, please.
Mr. Henderson, and members of the commission, my name's Jerry Noble. I live at 5672 North 73rd Street in Scottsdale, Arizona. I have been a commercial real estate broker in Phoenix for 23 years. In that time, I've always practiced real estate. I've also managed Cushman &amp; Wakefield as the manager of the office, which is the largest private real estate company in the world, with over 300 employees in Arizona. I'm also the designated broker for Cushman &amp; Wakefield. In my time, I have represented Scottsdale Healthcare. I leased all of their medical office buildings, both at the north and Osborn campus. Mercy Gilbert Hospital has approximately 750 doctors, providing 200 beds for surgery and care. The hospital offers a full range of services, which we're aware of, notably cardiovascular care, orthopedic care, pediatric care, including its commitment to Phoenix Children's Hospital for the 22 beds. I believe the highest and best use for the land adjacent to the hospitals for these practice groups that serve patients in the hospital. If you look at the hospital campuses throughout Phoenix, you'll see that to be the case. These physicians congregate and practice adjacent to the hospitals that they provide surgery and care for. If we weren't challenged, and this was mentioned earlier, if we weren't challenged by, you know, the changes in the landing rules, I think this park would have developed faster. You would have seen some of these doctors move into this park. This park is young right now. You've just seen a few uses move into the park. I believe this changes the trajectory of the park. To the extent that caregivers take into account their neighbor, I do feel that it will affect the marketability of the adjacent sites and the value of the adjacent sites. I have no financial interest in the park. I represent nobody in the park. And furthermore, some of these, and again, we all agree that the services are needed, to the extent these are real or preconceived ideas of the concerns and the stigmas that go along with this, to the reality that this is built, I'm more concerned about what goes on outside of the buildings than what goes on inside of the buildings. I'm more concerned about the green space outside of the buildings, because as you see these care centers, as people come out of their meeting spaces, they're outside, and they're doing things that will affect the value of marketability of the rest of the park. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick question, overall. Yeah, I have a question. So, in the location of the space, how much closer to the hospital? You say you like it next to more medical. I'm just trying to understand, from someone on the real estate side, where would you locate this?
If we can just keep this quick, I don't want this to turn into a case where we're answering, having dialogue with each.
Yeah, but I'm going to be able to ask you to.
That's fine. I don't want, I don't want this to turn into a dialogue with every single person that comes up to the mic.
That's correct.
I can't speak for Mercy Gilbert, and the integrity they hope to maintain for the physicians that serve their hospital. We all agree that the services are needed. To the extent that this changes the trajectory of the park, I think it's concerning.
Okay. I don't think you answered it, but okay.
Well, I must not have understood your questions.
Well, I'm asking, this is a medical area. So, and we're pretty close to the hospital in this park. So, are you looking at Adam being part of the hospital?
No, I'm not looking. I'm looking for them to be in a location that doesn't affect the rest of the park, and the landowners in the park, and the integrity of the services that serve the hospital. Due to the use of a park that's in its infancy, I think it's concerning. Due to the use that we're looking for, a special use permit, I represent Salt River Devco and the Pima Indian Tribe, and we have a corporate campus at McDonald and the 101. And the same situation is in play. A medical health hospital, which we all recognize the services are needed, wanted to go into the corporate campus park. They declined the special use, because it would affect the integrity of the corporate campus. It's the same concept.
Okay. I don't think you answered the question, but thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Derek, and on deck is Debbie McElroy. If you can please move up front, please.
An email that I'd like to distribute to you guys, so who do I hand that to?
And we'll do two minutes for each speaker going forward.
This is an email from my Vice President, Jason Anzalone, at Ergens. He says, "We have been in the country for nearly 30 years, and specifically near the Mercy Gilbert Medical Center for the last 10, one building of which is due north of Oaks Senior Living Facility off of Rome Street. While we are often proponents of community growth and development, I would like to express my opposition to the conditional use permit approval of the Copper Springs East Project. We have been both neighbors and owners of such facilities, and are very cautious of their specific locations to ensure the safety and integrity of the neighborhoods and the local school systems. This proposed location at Melrose and Rome Street is not official for the future development of nearby vacant lands. Such facilities do have significant value to communities and residents, but most are found in less traveled areas to minimize residual traffic and interactions with residents or commercial neighbors. This location is simply not suited for such use, and I strongly urge the Planning Commission to deny such conditional use permit. Respectfully, Jason Anzalone, a Vice President of Ergens." Thank you.
Debbie McElroy?
I am opposed to this.
If you wish to speak, can you please come up to the podium, state your name and address, please, for the record? Harold, if you can please move to the front of the room.
My name is Debbie McElroy, and my address is 463 North Mountain View Road in Apache Junction. And I am opposed to the project, but don't have any other comments.
Richard? Please state your name and address for the record, please. On deck is Sarah Knob. Did I pronounce that correctly? No, thank you. You're already up front.
Thank you. Good evening. Richard Harold. My address is 1 Arizona Center, Phoenix, Arizona. Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission, I'm a lawyer, and I've been engaged to represent Gilbert Arizona Senior Property LLC. I'm here to ask for a continuance. My client currently owns and operates the Oaks, which is an independent living, assisted living, and memory care facility, which is located only 150 feet from the proposed Behavioral Health Hospital. Got just a few points. Number one, our client did not receive a letter from the applicant until Friday of last week. Town Code Section 5, 205 D1A requires a 50% of the site. Number two, our client never received notice of a neighborhood meeting as required by Town Code 5, 204 C1. They only know that one occurred, because a neighbor told them about it this week. Number three, my client operates an assisted living and memory care facility. It's frankly outrageous that the applicant didn't even bother to phone, or to simply knock on our door to discuss their application. Because our client had to scramble to find legal counsel, and because we were just engaged today, a continuance is not only appropriate, but it's also necessary, because we did not have the time to participate in the process. I have the right to participate in the process. Stakeholders is to allow stakeholders to participate in this process. We have that right. It would also be inappropriate for you to act tonight and tell us to meet with the applicant before the town council considers the case, because we will have been denied the right to participate in the entire process, and the proverbial train will have left the station without us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sarah? And on deck is Kathleen Dollar, if you could please move up front.
My name is Sarah Knob, and I'm here, my address is 644 West San Pedro Street in Gilbert. I'm a lifelong resident of Gilbert, along with my parents and my three younger sisters. And I'm here to express support for Copper Springs Hospital, and to provide a face, so that you can see to the kind of people that would be affected by this project. When my sister was 13-years-old, she began displaying extreme mood swings, paranoia, anger. She was not particularly violent, but she was depressed, and she needed some help. It's not an uncommon story. She often ended up in the ER, where they could not help her, because they could only recommend that she go to various different resources, none of which she were comfortable with, or were easy to access near where we were located. It's a complicated and messy story. That ends with my sister having to leave the house. And since she did not receive the treatment she needed, she had to go into an involuntary program. And I strongly believe that if she had received the help she needed at a place such as Copper Springs, I would not be standing here today. I've met many more people who are, who share similar stories to mine, and there's always a common thread. We're normal families, living in normal neighborhoods, with loved ones whose brains just happen to not work right. It's easy, I think, to think of mentally ill people as people who are violent and crazy and are. Kids and adults. Thank you.
And Kathleen Dollar, please.
Sorry, I need a second here. Thank you for your time this evening. I'm Kathleen Dollar. I live in Gilbert 2223 East Cortez Drive, Gilbert, Arizona. I'm also a member of the East Valley Behavioral Health Coalition. And I'm going to read a letter of support for, in support of Copper Springs, from our President, Deb Geisling, who cannot be here this evening. And then, I'll have a couple of words as a senior leader for Dignity Health. Dear Ms. Edwards, this letter is to express our support of Copper Springs' proposal for a new inpatient treatment hospital near Mercy Gilbert Center. Mercy Gilbert Medical Center is what it should say. The mayor's task force on substance use and behavioral health began in 2014, at the recommendation of former Mayor John Lewis, to better address issues surrounding mental health and substance abuse in Gilbert. The task force has now transitioned into community-led East Valley Behavioral Health Coalition, and is comprised of community members, faith-based leaders, and behavioral health professionals, and public safety officials, to identify resources and potential programs to address this difficult issue. Our mission is to build a community around families, adults, and youth, providing resources, connection to help and heal. Our background and experience with these issues makes us uniquely qualified to comment on Copper Springs East proposal. The applicant presented to our group in early September, and I had the opportunity to attend the community neighborhood meeting held on September 28, 2017. I learned the plan is to build a state-of-the-art hospital that serves the Gilbert and East Valley communities with treatment for mental health issues and addiction. We feel the proposed hospital will improve the quality and access to mental and substance abuse treatment for residents in our community. This would be very beneficial for our Gilbert community, due to our town having no inpatient facilities where people can deal with substance abuse and mental health illness. We have also learned more about their Avondale location and the successful community partners they have formed with West Valley Public Safety officials, city staff, and health officials. And we've encouraged the community to move to Gilbert. Short, we've supported the efforts of the town to approve the application. In addition to this letter, as I mentioned, I'm a leader at Dignity Health, who is responsible for our community. In 2014, 2016, many individuals needing an inpatient bed for mental health are unfortunately held in the emergency room, sometimes for several days, even weeks, because there's not lack of availability to support the services they need. Copper Springs offers an answer to this dilemma. Additionally, Copper Springs offers a level of care and continuum of care for those Gilbert residents that are discharged from our emergency room, urgent care, or hospital. Individuals suffering from mental health or addiction should have the availability of medical and health services by medical experts, the same as anyone with cancer, heart disease, or any other condition. A specialty service that addresses their need through the continuum. Finally, think of your own family, friends, place of work, neighborhood, school, or church. You likely know at least one person or more that would benefit from a Copper Springs facility in your own community. I do. My daughter, a young adult suffering from mental illness who is admitted on an hour away from her family. Should she need inpatient services again, Copper Point would be in her own community as well. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. I do have one, two more cards here that do not wish to speak. They are opposed to the item. Thomas Tooney and Judy Tooney, and their comment is, "Facility is too close to Harvey Plaxton Weston." Did I say? At this time, I'd like to ask the applicant to come back up, and if they would like to make additional comments to what has just been said, you'll have five minutes.
Thank you. I hope I don't need five minutes. I think I'll just say, what you've heard today are compelling from both sides. I think it's, the stigma mentioned before is probably best represented in some of those comments that I heard today, that this is going to attract a transient population. It's just simply not true. People loiter, and prowl around. Not true. The first time I read that petition, as it came up, if anyone had presented that petition to me, I probably would have signed it, because it sounded like the Armageddon was going to come. If you write something as spooky as that, I think you can probably get nine out of 10 people to sign that letter. I can tell you that Mr. Wolf had reached out through his broker in February for us to purchase the property, which we declared to be a two-way affair. He contacted me, receiving my notice letter, inviting him to a neighbor meeting. I had asked him to sit down and visit with us. He was unwilling. He did not come to the neighbor meeting, and then was told through his broker that if you buy my property, the problem will go away. I know I was recently asked by the city manager to go out and canvass the neighborhood to collect petitions to manufacture opposition for this case. I think it's important, you know, the. In this case, I've met with Gilbert Chamber of Commerce, the Gilbert Public Schools, the East Valley Behavioral Health Coalition, the Mercy Gilbert Hospital. We had a community meeting, which is not required of the CUP process, yet we did. In fact, we did that in September, prior to filing our application, so we could have a chance to meet the community before we. or four years ago. As people have contacted the town, we've... The notice requirement is 300 feet. In our case, we decided to double that notice requirement. We mailed our letters to 600 feet. Granted, that doesn't capture areas beyond that, and you've got to ask yourself, at some point, you're probably... And what that did is that captured all the properties within that medical campus area. The notice process also includes two signs that are posted on the property. Our letters were sent one time 10 days prior or 15 days prior to the neighbor meeting, and again, a second time 15 days prior to this public hearing today. And I'm sure that there will be more opportunities for public participation. There's an appeal process that can go to town council if so inclined. In addition, there's a design review process that will come up both probably in January and February. Additional letters will go out at that time as well. So there's been ample opportunity for public participation, and there will continue to be ample opportunity for public participation. I like the comment regarding vulnerable people as if we are some type of criminal element and that the community around us are victims, that we're going to prey upon them. And that's the stigma that I alluded to earlier, which is not true in this case. I've never met you before. I didn't know you were going to come, but I appreciate your words because that's the perfect example of who I'm describing and the type of people that need treatment in this type of facility. These are your neighbors. This is your church folk. This is your own family. And in my case, it's my own family. And I wondered to myself, what am I going to do when my daughter turns 19 as an adult? Where do I take her? I still am dealing with it today. It's a problem. It's tough. But I'm grateful that I don't have to drive to Fountain Hills every day like I was twice a week beforehand, and I'm hopeful that there may be... As part of a growing town, you need a variety of services. You need a full scope of services. Their directors, their key people to know who we are and how we can cooperate and work together. They're perfectly comfortable with this use being in this area. This is a medical facility. This is a medical area. This is a type of area this should be and is appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on the commission that has any questions while he's up there? Commissioner Ayler.
Oh, you disappeared, Chris. So there was a couple of comments of... I don't know if... ...of admittance and unadmittance.
That answers that question. In fact, I'll invite Alexis to come up just so I make sure I don't speak out of order. Our facility, because it's involuntary, somebody self-admits, and within 15 minutes, they're behind a secured door and receiving an evaluation. At that point, they describe the process, what the treatment will be, what the expectations are, and if this is a private facility for them. If someone says, you know, it's... Timo, I regret coming in here 20 minutes ago. Can you describe what would happen if someone wanted to leave?
Yep.
And also describe what happens if someone's forwarded into the process and if they would choose to leave.
Sure. So we're always going to have some type of licensed professional check to make sure that there's no risk to themselves or others. If there isn't, open the doors. Here's three referrals to outside communities, and we're going to let you go. If they need to place a transportation, we're going to provide that as well. I have a transportation coordinator on staff at our Avondale facility that their entire job is just to make sure that we have some type of transportation for someone that needs a ride if they don't have family members or someone can't pick them up. We work, people have jobs, they can't always have family members come them. Not everybody has that opportunity. Not everybody wants to tell their family members when they're at the hospital for some of that stigma reasons. If someone's four days into the program and they want to leave, they have that opportunity. We have a treatment team. They're going to talk to their psychiatrist and talk to their therapist, talk to their nursing staff. If they do want to leave, there's an against-medical advice document that they sign. They are then assessed within 24 hours by a psychiatrist to make sure that there is no risk to themselves or others. If there is not, again, we're going to discharge someone with community referrals within appointments and have transportation set up for that person. That is something that I want, that I don't want people just going out and walking in the neighborhood. They need to be able to get to their homes and their community and back to where they are from.
And Alexis, if they are converted involuntary, what happens next?
If they do, if it is someone that is considered a risk to themselves or others, there is an involuntary process. We start what's called a petition that is sent to one of the hospitals that is required for involuntary court-ordered evaluation. On this side of town, it would probably be UPC. That's at least what it was when I was working in Tempe. UPC then does, looks at that petition, the petition in the court that says that's an issue, that yes, that person is in need of ongoing treatment. They will then send the police out to come and escort that person to their hospital and continue treatment with them going forward. So it wouldn't be with us. We would hold them at our hospital until the police come and get them.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So there would never be a situation where someone leaving would be just standing outside waiting for a ride? They would have to be received by...
I want someone, everyone, to have a ride. So if I'm going to pay for that out of my own pocket at the hospital, absolutely, I'm going to do that. You know, if somebody, they're waiting for their family members, we're going to have them wait in the unit until their family members...
Okay. So no loitering outside?
That's not what I'm...
Yeah, they're taken care of until they receive their ride, whether it's you or others. Right, got it. Okay. Thanks. I have another question, if I may. Yeah, go ahead. So, Mr. Ball, with regards to the assertion that a neighboring property, I think it was the assisted-living facility 150 feet away or so, did not get noticed, is there, is there any explanation for that or what are you thinking?
I have no explanation. All I know is that the letters that we send are per the addresses listed on file on the Maricopa County Assessors Map. We simply put in the radius. The Assessors Map gives us the mailing addresses. The city has a copy of the notice letters. It also has an affidavit signed by us that those letters were completed and mailed in due time. In fact, there's been two rounds of letters that have gone, both with our neighbor meeting and prior to this hearing. Undoubtedly, most of these properties are owned by LLCs. Sometimes those go to PO boxes. Sometimes they go to out-of-state. It's the first I've heard of this facility having objection whatsoever. I don't know who the property record is on there, and I can go back and look to see what that mailing address is, but we've completed the mailing per code.
And is there any way, staff, to confirm that that facility received a letter?
Chairman and vice chair, I did receive a question from one of our council members asking about our public notice for this project. I personally ran the buffer with Maricopa County Assessors for 300 feet and 600 feet. This applicant did, in fact, notify all within 600 feet. I personally checked it.
Okay, so we're not concerned. That has been achieved. Got it. Thank you.
And when does that date start? Does that date start when the post office actually puts their stamp on that envelope and it sends out? If, so say, I put something in the mail right now, it goes into the post box, the post station is going to get it, and they stamp it, they put a stamp on there, it's received. Is that the date that that 15-day period kind of starts?
Our code doesn't address that specific question, but for the purpose of satisfying the code, it's the date that the letter is actually sent, not received. Because...
That's my question.
Right.
When it's sent. So the post office sends it. We can't control when an envelope is actually opened.
Right.
Okay. Is there any other questions?
Yeah, I had a quick question before you sat down. My apologies. So there was a lot of question, and I got some statements after this, too, so, but there was a lot of questions on the type of people that were coming around, and I do appreciate the definition of how, you know, someone's transferred out or gets a ride out. But already, compared to the, what Mercy Gilbert receives in the same type of clientele, are they being sent somewhere else? Are they already coming to the emergency room in Mercy Gilbert? So these patients with mental or substance issues, they're already within the area going to Mercy Gilbert. Is that true?
Correct. Yes. So I'm sure someone from Mercy Gilbert would be better to tell exactly how their ER is, but I can speak for, one of the ways that we get patients into our hospital in Avondale or any of the hospitals here in town is through the emergency rooms. They send us people, and they have sent us people to our hospital as well, out all the way into Avondale from Mercy Gilbert. So these are people that are sitting in the ERs that are looking for help, and they are then sitting in the ERs and waiting for beds to open up throughout the valley.
So these clients are already being serviced within this area?
Correct.
Thank you.
Did you have a statement you wanted to make or...
Yeah.
I do. I didn't know if we were going to wrap it up first with...
Okay. Well, we can save the statements for later and see if there's any more questions. Did you have a question?
I have no question.
Oh, good, down there.
Any questions?
Okay.
I have one for staff.
Okay, so there is a question for staff.
It's a quick one. I just, another thing that was mentioned by some of the people that came up was that this could be located in industrial zoning. Is, in the town of Gilbert, is that viable location in an industrial area?
Thank you, Commissioner, Chairman and Commissioner Ayler. I believe on one of your slides here, Adam did show you where the uses were permitted by right in commercial, general commercial and regional commercial, and with a use permit in general office and business park and also in public facility districts. So a hospital would not be a permitted use in our light industrial or our general industrial zoning districts.
Right. So our zoning code looks at it for, it's more of a commercial setting, not an industrial setting?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions for staff? Okay, so we'll close the hearing to the public and bring it back up to the dais for discussion. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say? Commissioner Johns?
Yeah. Well, I appreciate everybody's conversations tonight, and I appreciate everybody coming up and giving their opinion. I feel that this is a very ignored group of our populace, and it's kind of been painted by some of the groups that, you know, this is going to be a drugged-in. But from previous presentations, this is not our only presentation of this project to us. I don't see that. You know, I don't see this as just a drug trafficking area where people are going to be hanging out in front. It's treating many levels of mental illnesses, and, you know, it's a use by right. It's from our examples from earlier presentations also, we see it as a safe and secure location. I think this is, of anywhere that you can see, this is a more proper area as being, this is where our medical is targeted to go in. It's not a residential area. It's not within a business park. This is what it's targeted to. So this is a proper location. I feel it meets every bit of the findings of fact, and I truly believe this is actually an asset that this community needs to come into our area. I know nobody wants things to go in their backyard, but this, this is a medical dedicated area. So I'm in full favor of this coming in this area, and I just wanted to jump out there and put my opinion before some others.
Thank you for that. Anyone else? Commissioner Cavani.
Yeah, I really do appreciate everyone who's come, taken time to come out, taken time to write a letter, taken time to write emails, taken time to study this issue. We don't feel alone when you guys do that. So thank you for doing that and coming here and sharing your thoughts with us. I share Commissioner John's feelings. I think this is in a spot where it belongs. I think it is a good location. I don't believe it'll reduce property values, and I don't believe it's going to alter the trajectory of this medical park. I think seeing how Avondale runs their operation, this is going to be a good fit for this area. So I am definitely in support.
Thank you. Commissioner Bloomfield.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to make a point that this is, here is a conditional use permit, and once it's approved, it's, it's a use according to conditions. And when those conditions aren't met, then people can bring it up and we can review the case again. And so there's, there's that safeguard there for the community and for the town and for the residents surrounding us. With that being said, I'm in support of it being in this area. We heard hours of testimony when we, when it came before us in a previous location. We had opportunities in study sessions to learn more about behavioral health services. I've had conversations with friends who are pediatricians and doctors, and they also confirmed what was being said by everyone, by the people who came and brought testimony to us tonight, that this is a need, that it is a dire need in our community, that there are people who need this kind of service and who can't get it close to home, and they are traveling and causing further stress and, and harm to their family as they continue to try to deal with it from a distance. So I'm in favor of it being here, and I appreciate everybody coming out and sharing their testimony as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Ayler.
Well, I'm in agreement with most of the commission. It's been stated, just a few things to add on to that, and we, we look at this as a medical facility as a town, and the area has been dedicated as Valvista Medical District. And so these are the types of areas that we're looking for, but then you start looking at separations. And so the previous cases that came in front of us were next to schools and, and there was misconceptions, but there is also stipulations being added. But this time, we, we're being separated by Valvista, which is a very large street in our, in our town, and in separation from those two schools or three schools. And I look at a location and why I'd ask the real estate agent that came up before us is if, in our town, because we need to add these services for our town, where would we have this? And in this district, I can't find anywhere else in our town that this would want to be for our town as our citizens would need. So at that, I would be in favor of approving this.
Thank you. I'm not going to repeat what the other commissioners have already said, so the only new item that I would say is I do favor this project and mainly because I'm involved with a very good veterans organization in this town that does a lot of great things for our veterans within Gilbert and our surrounding communities. And since I've been part of this organization, one of the most disheartening things that I've come to learn is the limited resources that our veterans have to access to help with their PTS. The veterans, the VA community is so overwhelmed with what they're dealing with that a lot of veterans today feel lost and don't know who to turn to to help them cope on a daily basis. So to have a facility like this to come to our town to help our veterans and our surrounding communities of veterans to help deal with these, to help cope with these issues, I strongly support that. And other, also, what I've also learned from this case is it's not just so much the veterans. There's also people on our local police force that need coping mechanisms, and these are the types of facilities that they turn to. Same with our fire department. So I think they stigmatize this as a degenerate place is uncalled-for and unrealistic. There's a lot of good people out there that need these types of facilities. So with that being said, I'd like to, if there's no further discussion?
Chairman, I move to make the findings of fact and approve use permit 17-1035 for Copper Springs East, which will be a conditional use permit allowing a behavioral health hospital located at the northeast corner of Melrose Street and Rome Street.
Second?
Second by Commissioner Bloomfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Move to recommend approval to council. Thank you.
Excuse me, I just want to make sure there, it is subject to conditions, so if we could try that again with saying subject to conditions. Thank you.
Sure. Fair enough. Let me remake my motion. I make the motion to make the findings of fact and approve UP 17-1035 for Copper Springs East, subject to the conditions in the staff report.
Does that work? Good, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bloomfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion moves for approval to council. Recommend approval for council. Next will be item 18, Z 17-1019 Guidelines for Multifamily Uses and Regional Commercial. Catherine?
Catherine Lorbeer, Principal Planner. Tonight, the Planning Commission is being asked to consider a text amendment to the Land Development Code. This public hearing item was continued from your November 1st meeting to hold an additional stakeholder meeting. As you know, multifamily uses are...
Second by Commissioner Bloomfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Move to recommend approval to council. Thank you.
Excuse me, I just want to make sure there, it is subject to conditions. So if we could try that again with saying subject to conditions.
Sure.
Fair enough. Let me remake my motion. I make the motion to make the findings of fact and approve UP seventeen dash one zero three five for Copper Springs East, subject to the conditions in the staff report.
Does that work? Good, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bloomfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion moves for approval to council. Recommend approval for council. Next will be item eighteen, Z seventeen one zero one nine Guidelines for Multifamily Uses and Regional Commercial. Catherine?
Catherine Lorbeer, Principal Planner. Tonight, the Planning Commission is being asked to consider a text amendment to the Land Development Code. This public hearing item was continued from your November first meeting to hold an additional stakeholder meeting. As you know, multifamily uses are allowed in the regional commercial zoning district only when they're part of an integrated mixed-use plan. It does require approval of a conditional use permit and that use permit is subject to four additional findings of fact. We currently have about 430 acres of vacant regional commercial land in Gilbert today and about six of these properties are over 20 acres in size. So we still have some important pieces in our community that may consider integrating This is the section of the code that contains those additional four findings of fact. And the other portion in that section talks about methods to achieve these findings can be found in the Chapter Two Design Standards and Guidelines. So that is what we're recommending tonight is that you consider adopting those guidelines. And that will help us continue to implement the goals and policies of the general plan. Now, the majority of the guideline language was crafted back by stakeholders in 2014. So we did work in the last few months with an informal working group to clarify and refine the text. The purpose of design guidelines is to provide both the project designer and the staff reviewer with a common set of parameters that foster mixed use and implement the goals of the general plan. When a project is submitted for multifamily in regional commercial, that applicant will tell us in their, in their narrative and in the design of their project, how they've addressed the guidelines. Or they'll show us that their design contains equally superior ways to meet the intent of the guidelines. As I mentioned, we did hold an additional stakeholder meeting on November 15th. We sent invitations to developers and representatives of some of the recent multifamily projects. And we had six individuals attend that meeting and along with Commissioner Ailer and Commissioner Cavaney and also council member Bridget Peterson was in attendance. So after that meeting, we did get some suggested red lines from one of the stakeholders. And you'll see in your packet that the majority of those red lines were included for your consideration. It does include elimination of the statement under each of the findings that the proposed project should contain following methods. This is just a copy of a page from the guidelines. As you can see, it has an introductory statement with the finding that the guidelines are intended The general plan goals and policies that adoption of this text amendment would support. And they, you can see, we have several areas where we talk about promoting appropriate mixed-use development, providing a mix of land uses and creating connectivity and pedestrian-oriented So staff is requesting that you recommend approval to the town council for Z seventeen dash ten nineteen for the multifamily in regional commercial guidelines. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Is there any questions for staff?
[inaudible]
Okay. Okay. Not seeing any and seeing how you're the applicant, you already got your 10 minutes.
Thank you.
I do have one card here from Brennan Ray who'd like to speak. Brennan, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Chair members of the commission. Brennan Ray, seven oh two East Osborne. Thank you again for the opportunity to stand and speak. I spoke a little bit last month in support of a continuance and going to keep my remarks very brief. We're appreciative of staff and Commissioner Cavaney and Commissioner Ailer for the opportunity to sit down with the private side, the development community and review these and discuss some of the concerns that we had with them. We're appreciative of staff's recommendation. As Catherine indicated, a majority of our comments and suggested edits to the design guidelines were incorporated and we're grateful for that. And we agree with the elimination of the requirement that there be a minimum threshold for each of these design guidelines. One of the challenges that we had when we looked at this was balancing guidelines with requirements. And that seemed to not be an equal statement. Design guidelines should be just that, guidelines that give planning staff, that give the commission, that give the town council the necessary tools that they have to, on an individual basis and as a collective group, judge for themselves whether or not the proposed development satisfies the expectations of the town in general, of people individually and their thoughts. But importantly, as we look at it, that we're able to satisfy the four additional findings that are found in the LDC in order for there to be multifamily as a use within the RC. Three minutes, let alone probably the two that I'm working on now. And so I'm happy to go into any additional detail as to our thoughts behind the red lines and our suggestions, but we would recommend this body's approval in accordance with staff's recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Catherine, is there anything that you want to add? No? Okay, thank you. So we'll close the hearing to the public and bring it up to the dais for discussion. Please. Sure.
I am terribly disappointed with the red line document I got. Let me explain for those who weren't part of our working group how this went. We gathered with a very diverse group. Within our group, we had some who were very much about just making them, these guidelines, some, some general ideas, general thoughts, ways to achieve. There were others that felt that they should be more requirement-based. As a working group, and I believe there were about seven of us, six or seven, we were able to work over the course of a few months and a few different meetings to work out a document that we agreed on. Nobody in that group had a vested interest. Nobody in that group was biased in any way towards or against. And frankly, that was, it was a group with a ton of expertise. Last month, we were asked by Mr. Ray, and I believe his applicant might have been involved with that, to, to table the motion for, or table the, the case for one more month so they could come in. We thought that was fine. Brought him in, had a discussion, centered a lot on, do we, do we say in the document that there's a certain number out of the criteria per section that are required? Five of eight must be achieved or should be achieved is the terminology we used. Of course, Mr. Ray and his applicant, as well as another developer, had concerns with some of that language. They thought should meant must, which it doesn't, but they felt it did. They felt that five out of eight suggested that they were requirement of the guidelines, which is. We left that meeting with an agreement that we would let Mr. Ray go back and make a few red lines that might help address those couple of issues. We even talked about rather than the word should, maybe it should be strive to achieve. We were okay with that. Well, I was horribly disappointed to see the massive amount of red that came back on that document. Absolutely inappropriate. It's not what you were sent to do. So as I've thought about this, I'm a little troubled that between staff and half of that working session, nobody understands that guidelines are parameters and boundaries. We've been working under the assumption that guidelines. You have lines on a road that are guidelines that get you to a destination. You are not allowed to leave those lines if you want to safely make it to your destination. Time requiring our development community to live within some boundaries and parameters. And that troubles me because we're not going to get what we want, which is quality mixed use, if we allow a biased entity to come in and say, here's what you're going to do. And that's what happened. They put red lines in that said, we don't like what you did, we're going to tell you what we need. And they have in mind their holdings and how they're going to be financially successful. And that is not the purview the rest of us had, which was what will benefit the town of Gilbert. So I will not approve this document. I will not vote to approve it. It may be six to one, but I will not vote to approve this document with the red lines. I will vote to approve it only without any of the red lines, completely gone, all the red, or I will reject it. That's my opinion.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Cavaney. Anyone else? Commissioner Ayla?
Yes, please.
Go for it.
I definitely have the same spirited feeling that Commissioner Cavaney has. I felt highly disappointed when I read that document. It threw in the face of all the work that the working group did. That working group, there was spirited conversations back and forth. There was definitely conversations of where do we go with this? Where, where does this go? And nobody in that working group had a vested interest in any one property. It's about the town. It's about working. This, this idea that we have is the reason why in the conversations we've had even years back is this is regional commercial. We're looking to integrate residential into this and trying to make it mixed use. And the conversations were, how, how do we work with vertical? How do we work with horizontal? Vertical's really simple. We, we all, you get one over another, that's easy. We all said, okay, great. But that's hard to get in our community. So we needed to figure out how do we set these guidelines for mixed use into the future of getting into the RC? We're, we're not looking at this, this is a use permit to get into regional commercial, the most dense, best uses in here, and we're trying to put in mixed family. And we're just turning it into, how do we get more mixed multifamily in? That got separated. I just, I, I looked at the document and it took out everything. I mean, it would have been a point just for the document rewritten. I mean. Or we could go through and talk about the red lines and see what would go through and look at that. But I mean, is there room for movement on the original document? Yes. And there were, that's where the discussions were supposed to go is, do we make this movement from the discussion of five out of eight? Do we look at it globally? Not. Let's just get rid of everything. Let's just throw it out. This is just a document to, to look at and it means nothing. And that's ultimately what that red, that red line's turned out to be. So I would ultimately look to vote this down or talk about it individually and talk about those red lines.
Yeah, let me, let me clarify something too. So of the four findings of fact, we developed as a working session, eight different criteria by which a developer could, and by which we as a, as a commission, as an adjudicating body, could measure its achievability. That's, so there were 32 points of development ability. By taking, now a developer can show up, put a project in front of us and say, I want to put multifamily on regional commercial, and they don't have to meet a single criteria. There's not a single threshold of achievability, no measurability at all. And what we've effectively done by letting them do this, and this struck me just a few weeks ago, I didn't get it at first, but I do now, is that it is more prudent for a developer to put multifamily on regional commercial than it is on multifamily because they get denser properties, they get more yield by putting it. My position at this point is if they want MF, rezone it to MF and live within the rules of MF. That's the right way to go or else we're going to lose all our RC to multifamily over a short period of time. And that's not going to be good for the town at all.
Thank you for that. Is there anyone else that'd like to make a comment? Commissioner Bloomfield?
At least since I've been on the commission. And it, it's one that, it took me a long time to wrap my head around it. What's the big deal? Commissioner Cavaney, he helped build kind of the crown jewel, mixed-use development in the whole valley, and that's Carolyn Commons. It's, it's, it's. Unique in that area. It was just the right place and the right mix of everything. I don't see us ever having anything like that in Gilbert. Does that mean that we shouldn't try to strive to get a mixed use? Presenting to the town and to the commission, she's 12, 13, 14, 15 years ago. And the bottom and, and living at the top. And that was, that was the goal. That was, that was the idea. And, and that, once I learned what the focus of the, of this RC district was and how crucial that was and how unique it's supposed to be as far as the development, then I understand where they're coming from. The commission or to have this, this, these meetings be convened in this, in this setting and to put this together and, and then to have it by their reports gutted by, by one single person seems kind of disingenuous and, and the wrong standard to set. So, and I, and I, I tend to agree with, with Commissioner Cavaney as far as RC and we have multifamily zoning. If that is not sufficient, RC should not be multifamily. It's regional commercial, it's intended to be blended and to have multiple uses in there. If there is, if the category is not being met to the satisfaction of the developers, there should be another category developed to be able to accomplish that. This is the wrong one for it. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Frillik?
I appreciate all the time that went into these documents. But as I, as I read the document and read it, because you can read what it said before and then what the revisions were, it did take the meat out of it. Quite frankly, I felt like, and this is having not been involved in the document at all, but reading it as, what is the purpose of it at this point? There's no guidelines. Guidelines do mean something. I work for, and we work for the state of Arizona Department of Transportation and ADOT has roadway design guidelines, they call them. And there are, these standards are, several times they say must. These aren't options. These are their guide and the type to build their roads. In fact, this document, say, the way it was previously written, allows for a lot of options because it doesn't use the word must. And the word should, which needs to be changed, that's fine. Or maybe you could even debate, is it meeting 20 of these requirements across the four different groups and not five in each segment? We could debate those types of things, I think. But I think you do need some sort of requirements where the document, in my opinion, just, just does not hold any weight at all.
Commissioner Johns?
Quick question for staff real quick.
Quick question for staff, real quick. So these red lines that were here, was this a collaborative set? Because I, from my understanding coming into this, I thought it was between the users group, staff, and a third party, that, so where did most of the red lines come from, I guess?
We did receive the red lines from one stakeholder representing their, their client.
So these aren't staff red lines also?
Well, you have a, in your packet, you have what was originally submitted by the stakeholder, and then we took the majority of those red lines and showed them in the guideline document. There were some that we felt weren't, changed the, they were, they related to the general plan policies, or they were widely held practices, so we didn't include those red lines. We didn't eliminate some of the texts, but you have both documents.
Is this a collaboration between staff and?
Well, not so much a collaboration, but us looking through what they provided and presenting those red lines that we felt could be considered, and without changing the substance of a particular sentence. And that is certainly something that the commission can consider tonight. If you feel that it's time for this document to move forward to the council, you can consider a motion including the red lines, or you could consider a motion without the red lines.
Okay, thank you.
Or some variation.
So, question, I'm getting the sense as to what would happen with this document, kind of what the motion would be and where would it go? So the consensus is, there's a vast amount of red comments on here that is troublesome to a good amount of commissioners right here. And I guess the question I have to the commissioners is, is there a compromise that you feel that, is there certain red comments on here that are livable to you guys, and others that are more, you feel are more pertinent to get into this, to leave in that document? Or is it one or the other? It's either no, no red comments and we go back to what's originally written, or?
As Commissioner Frolik pointed out, the, the red lines take all, all measurability out of the process. And so, to me, it's, it's all out.
Okay.
Yeah. There is nothing in there. The document is worthless with the red lines. It does us no good. We're no better than we were yesterday if we approve it with the red lines today.
Okay.
No better at all.
Okay. So if this is, if there's a recommendation for denial, it goes to the council for denial, and it's up to them to make the final decision, is that correct?
Yes, Commissioner, but because your commission has done so much work on this, and because you are the body that reviews and approves use permits, I think that your recommendation with some, your conditions or good reasons for how you want it to move forward would be very helpful for our council. So, like Catherine suggested, you can send it forward, either modified or without any red lines. So, you know, you are the experts for use permits, that is your role.
Okay. Now, it has already been continued once, is second continuance out of the question?
You are the chair and your commission can make that decision, so you can either send it forward now. Your recommendation would say, make a, this is a zoning text amendment, so the zoning text amendment must be approved by the town council. So you can recommend approval of this document with red lines or without red lines, or with red lines and some, and some red lines not. You can, you can pick and choose or not. But you would make a recommendation to the town council for a text, a zoning code amendment with whatever changes you want with what has been published tonight.
Okay, so in a way, to try and have a second round of people getting together and see if things can be worked out is kind of out of the question at this point, it's either...
Chairman, that is at your discretion, that is totally up to you and your, and your commission.
Okay. What are the thoughts of that?
Well, I'd like to get the temperature of the rest of the group, but I mean, my, my recommendation is that we approve it without any of the red lines and move it forward that way. That's what I, I'm willing to vote for that right now. I'm not willing to vote for it with the red lines. I would hate to see it denied here and then the town council have no idea why we denied it and go ahead and approve it. That would be a problem. We've already put months into this, to have it stripped out with a set of red lines by an outside stakeholder last minute, just seems unfortunate, so.
So if that were the case, and it goes to council to recommend approval without the red lines, does the council have the option to put those red lines back in?
Just like, just like you do, when a motion has, when a project has been advertised to public hearing, and when the public comes to a hearing and provides input, they have the option to approve as-is, deny, or approve with modifications, same as you.
Okay, thank you for clearing that up.
Chairman, if I may, I move to approve for the reasons set forth in the staff report, or I recommend approval to the town council, Z17-1019, without or removing all red lines made to the, the document provided by staff.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ayler. For this particular one, I like, I figured what the term is, is when you go right down the road and get every person's individual vote, what is that called?
I think it's called polling, but I'm not sure.
Polling, okay. Is there a discussion?
You want to table the motion? If we, we have to table it.
Okay, let's discuss.
I'd like to table a motion and have a little bit further discussion on this, because I, you know, these are some new points that came up, and I just kind of, with this new light, I'm kind of flipping through to see what the comments are even, are, so. I don't feel like I'm at the point where I can vote one way or the other at this point.
Commissioner Johns, maybe I could shed a little light on some of the talking points in our working session. It was suggested that we, we do, so we create an equal number of criteria in each of the four findings, and then have some, some threshold of achievability, which we set at five, and we talked about that, discussed that, should we drop it to four, is five enough, where should it be? We landed on five, and when the stake, when it was postponed a month, and we brought in a couple of developers, they, we talked about that again. Should we drop it to four? Should we keep it at five? Should we, like Commissioner Frolik mentioned, should we take 32 in aggregate and say you have to reach any 20 or whatever, right? So we did talk about that, and then we also talked about, let me just make one more point, and then feel free to ask anything. We talked about the word should. So when we say we should meet five of eight, and there was concern that should, in legalese, could mean shall, so we suggested, what if we said, instead of should, we've said strive to achieve five of eight? That gives us latitude up here to say, okay, we recognize that you met four in this category, or even three, but we see your effort, we see how you did it, and this site might have a challenge with reaching the five. We kind of get that, that in your current condition, that's, that's the condition. One of the things that the developers brought up is, well, we're concerned because what is, what is strictly strive to achieve today could be a requirement tomorrow, you know, the next commission reads it completely differently. I don't think that's, I think those words are pretty clear to me, but that was the, part of the discussion is, wait a second, maybe that's not going to be the case. And I think that's why the red lines took the turn they took, is that they, they were really trying to get away from a future that made these mandates.
So was there a discussion of reducing the number from five down to a lower number?
There was.
Or was there any discussion, because it was brought up by one of the chairman, that instead of an aggregate per category, it's an aggregate of the whole thing? Was that ever brought to?
It was, we did not go that direction in the end, but it was discussed, yeah. We stuck with the five of eight in each section. And we were fine with strive to achieve, I was fine with the word should, because that, to me, is not a mandate, but, yeah.
So would it be as simple as that was the biggest discussion during that project, or during that meeting to remove the red lines and add strive to achieve, instead of going all for nothing? Well, we have that right to do that.
It's, it's my opinion that it reads that way now. It should, is equivalent in my mind to strive to achieve. If that were the only thing that hung some of us up, I'm happy to make, in fact, I believe those are words that I proposed, so I'm perfectly fine with replacing the word should with strive to achieve. But what the, what the developer's rep did, the land agent who answered these, the stakeholder that came forward with these red lines, he struck out everything having to do with any, any threshold of achievability, so, yeah.
Yeah, I think one of the words that I recommended at the study session, or the last time we met about this, was to strike that word should, or shall, or must, because it can, it can be a little confusing as a requirement was to use the word encourage, which is in line to what you're kind of suggesting was, what was it again? Not strive to achieve, yeah. So I just kind of want to understand a little bit about the process as to if a project comes to the town within the RC and if we leave the document as-is compared to how it was before, so how much authority would staff have to make some of these guidelines enforceable onto a project versus a developer comes in and they don't hit any of the points on here, and there's not some sort of measures that you guys can lay on to the developer to have some sort of enforceability?
Chairman, I will try to respond to that. Keep in mind that when multifamily is proposed in regional commercial, we're looking at a full range now in Gilbert, a full range. I just met with a developer yesterday, a very good developer, who is interested in taking a project in Gilbert in regional commercial and actually tear down a building, to propose new multifamily to revitalize a regional commercial center, which is wonderful. So we, as we think about what this criteria provides as guidelines, is a very different picture than a vacant parcel with no commercial that we hope will connect with great design features. So quite opposites. We have in front of us now today, a full range, vacant parcels with multifamily coming in first, old parcels, 30, 40 years old, wanting to revitalize and do the best they can to integrate mixed use by introducing a new component to a commercial center. So as I look at what you have before you, is a list of criteria, a list of design, a list of good architectural expertise, a good list of planner expertise, a range of information that can be used so that you can make the findings. There's four findings that must be made. So it really is up to you and all of your gathered expertise, they do the best job they can with three criteria, four criteria, 20 criteria, or criteria we haven't even mentioned yet because we're not there yet. We haven't revitalized a center to bring in a new type of residential. So this is an effort to create findings, the findings have already been established, they're part of code, that's your job now. You've got four findings you must find that have been met. This is a set of ideas that have been broken up into four categories, which nicely fit the four findings you must make. But there's nothing that says what we broke up into four sets, that you could find something in set three that, that fit finding one beautifully. So really, what are you dealing with? You're dealing with a range of wonderful ideas to meet four findings, and the unknown. A great architect, a great developer, a great engineer, a great marketing person, anyone could come up with the best idea to integrate this project that's not even on this list. So you don't have to have a number to satisfy what you believe has been met. Doesn't have to be a number, because you might find that we have a unique situation where that project can be done well. And you also might find that a project that meets 20 criteria still isn't good enough. You have that flexibility, commissioners. That is your role, and we, we expect that your combined expertise will get us there.
And may I remind the commission, though, that the property just out, the apartment complex right outside the city building or the town buildings here, met those four findings, met those four findings, and it is not mixed use even in the slightest. And so what we have doesn't do it, it just doesn't do it. And what our hope was, is that we would be able, as an adjudicating body, be able to sit up here and say, we at least have some measure of judgment that we can apply. And the shoulds and the strive for's, that gave us latitude. It gave us latitude, it gave the developer a little latitude, but it also gave us at least targets, thresholds of achievement that we can measure to. So, yeah, I mean, what we have now, and the reason we brought this to bear again, was because we don't believe it was achieving it. We've had two projects that have suffered mixed use, frankly, in my opinion, neither one of them even gets close to being mixed use. And they met the four findings, both of them, so.
Commissioner Cavaney, on those two projects that you're referring to, did you have opposition to them as far as the development is concerned? I mean, other than just, they just didn't meet the RC four findings, is that, I mean, because like Santan Flats was one of those, I thought it was a great project. I was excited about it. The challenge was, we had this consternation of being in an RC but not really meeting those criteria, but it was still a great development. I still thought it was appropriate there and needed to be in the town. And so for that reason, I'm saying, perhaps there just needs to be another category out there, right?
Right, well, so I liked that product, too, I did. My solution would have been rezone that knob on the, on the south to multifamily, but they didn't want to do it because it meant less density.
Right.
They wanted to get the density, they wanted the revenue from that additional density. In the meantime, they put a wall between the two properties, they're very different properties. They did a little roundabout, and they did some, I think some signage that, that kind of paired them up, but it wasn't mixed in any other way.
And those two cases really caused the greatest amount of split votes on the commission that we've ever had.
I believe we voted, we voted them both down. I believe we voted them both down.
I think one went down and one, one...
Did Santan go up? I can't remember now.
Santan, I think, went ahead, but it was overturned by the town council.
Oh, no, no, they approved them both, that's why they're being built, yeah, yeah.
Right, that's what I...
Oh, you're, you're saying, yeah, yeah, we got overturned, yeah.
So, clearly, clearly there's a signal there that development is going to occur. Everybody is pro-development, we're all pro-development, we like to see it. We just want to see it in the appropriate categories and how it's...
I think one of my main concerns, though, is we're now, we've opened the door to RC being MF with zero requirement. You can show up, say, hey, it's mixed use, I call it mixed use, so it is, and they get to do it. Right now, that's what we're doing, so.
Right, right. In discussions, we didn't have these guidelines. We, as you felt, and I remember your conversations, I didn't think that it was mixed use, and I remember you, I have trouble with this as mixed use, but I like this project, and this project should be here. So it, there was a clear use to it that it wasn't mixed use, but you didn't have anything to, to encourage the developer to, because that one, all you had to do is turn a couple of buildings around, not have the truck drive going through right next to the pedestrian walkway, I don't know how you have a pedestrian access and it's right through the truck drive, but that was, we didn't have these, and that's the point of these guidelines, is trying to get there, to give us a little bit more of something that we can hold that developer to, to say, hey, we understand you got two developers, we understand that you have the, and that's our biggest problem, is we're not going to have a Kirland come in as we want it to. It's going to be an apartment developer, and it's going to be a retail component, or what it really is going to be, what ultimately comes more, is the apartment group come in and say, well, we don't know what that retail's going to be, but we surely know it's going to integrate someday, and we're going to have a jogging path to do it. And that's what we have to do that mix. So the reason why, I, I mentioned it in the work group, is as a profession, we should be able to look at it and you see it. And if you can see it's mixed use, it'll easily hit these findings. These aren't hard guidelines, and they're all open to interpretation. There's a few of them that are distances and stuff like that, but, but those aren't hard, but to, if you try to make a development, you try to match these guidelines, you're going to, we're all going to be very happy up here to see a development like this. going to, we're all going to be very happy up here to see a development like that come in our, so to say, well, we'll try to get there, we got one.
With that being said, I think, as I read through these, really, they're pretty minor changes, except for... So if we put those four paragraphs back in, except the other red lines, it's essentially the document that you want it to be.
There's a few more in that than neuter it as well, but I'll add too, to Commissioner Ayler's thought too, we thought and felt that this would be a benefit for developers, because they had at the onset an understanding of what would be needed to do mixed use on regional commercial. They don't come in blind going, well, we hope we did enough, we might get shot down tonight, but we don't have a clue. Instead, they know, and we've given them some really good talking points from which to stand at that podium and say, we met it, here you go, or here's what we did to try to meet it, we didn't quite get five, but we got four, and here's how we did it. You know what? You strove to achieve, go for it. You know, that's what, we thought it would help them and minimize desperation and angst at being turned away if it wasn't quite enough.
Well, we felt for a developer that was trying to get mixed use, that we were trying to help them out. We weren't helping the developer who didn't really want mixed use, that wanted to build an apartment complex and then come back with retail. We weren't helping that developer, we were helping the developer that truly wanted to do a mixed use, then it gave them something to work with, and that's the difference. And we also, I think there's a paragraph, the opening paragraph, that for the points, and Linda had mentioned it, there are things that we can't, we're not going to hit every one of these points. So if someone wants to come to us and say, hey, you know, that was written 10 years ago, but this is way better for mixed use, and we can consider that. It's not just saying you have to hit this point, that point, there is a lot of flexibility into it, for someone who really wants to try to do a mixed use development.
Yeah, to echo what Commissioner Caveney was saying is, I think it's good to have guidelines from both sides. I wouldn't want to develop a project, design it, come in here and realize it's not good enough to hit two of these in each category, three of these, even though it's a great project. I'd want to know that at the time, or at least know what the number should be. I wish I knew a little bit more about those conversations and how that went, when four was discussed, or do we go across different groups and combine them? I'd be interested in that part of it. But it does seem a little disingenuous that we tried to come up with, here's some guidelines and this will help, and then that portion got taken out, because now we don't know where to go with it. There's eight nice guidelines in four sections, and you can do some of them or none of them, but ultimately, it's still going to be heard by the commission, and we could decide we don't like it. And it would be better, I think, for both sides. You have to have a number, some sort of number that is reasonable as guidelines, that's how I feel.
Yeah, I'm just going to reiterate, I mean, those were some of my thoughts and the process of that as well, I'm just thinking, the guidelines are beneficial for both sides, right? And then also, reading through the document earlier, it does get me a little concerned, because anything that seems semi-strong in language, consideration or expectations was changed for a much looser word, if you will, and I think that is for, you know, the intentions are clear on what they were trying to do there. I just, I get a little concerned, especially hearing Commissioner Caveney's comments on hearing the group get together and their honest first intentions, and then seeing some of these red lines that are striked out where it really, I think it gets me a little concerned. I mean, that's just my opinion, right? I get it, people want to develop, I get, we're trying to eliminate as many obstacles and red tape as possible, but at the same time, guidelines are there for a good reason, and it is there for the benefit of our town.
So I guess the question you had asked about the number in the discussion, just to give you a little of what we dealt with, there was a lot of discussion on it, and I don't know, I don't, I wouldn't say it was all in agreement, and I can say that, there was definitely, in the work group and before, when we were having discussions, five was a number that was chosen, but there was definitely people in the work group that said, no, you know, one didn't like the number, a number, and some said, well, maybe we can get to three, maybe, what, is it two, you know? So there was a lot of that discussion. I'd be willing to talk about, you know, moving that number from five to four, just as a 50% kind of strive, but the issue to the five, I know there's a lot of view on this number, but... Findings, there's really only one... Was here, and this was the hardest one, because the property that's dirt in the front, and this is bisected by us and the Banner Medical. So it was hard for them, but there was a lot of discussion on the board and of what was brought before Banner came in, because there was vertical mixed use proposed, and they said, well, we can never get there, but we're going to get to horizontal. So some of those discussions were, well, we have the same signage, we have the same landscape, we have the sidewalk and a jogging path, and that was the whole thing. There was, they didn't have any guidelines to look at, there was nothing on those sides. They had an ability to try to open up, and there was discussions, open a boulevard, but they were a developer who, they're a good developer who develops, they do a lot of different material development styles, they do stuff in downtown Phoenix, so they had the ability to do something creative, and it's not out of their norm, but they didn't want to, because they didn't see it in our market. So they basically did your standard garden-style apartment complex, because there was nothing that we had as a commission to look at and on these guidelines. So that was the frustrating part of that, was eating Santan Flats, I drive by, I don't even think those signage matched, that was one of their criteria, signage match. I don't even think the at-home sign and the flat sign, if you really look at them and said those two are the same, but those are hard things to just to judge, because you got the same style sign, you got the same landscape, I mean, we're all in the desert, I mean, you're going to have the same type of landscape on that site. So we need something that's more designed, that's based on the buildings, not based upon just site layouts and pedestrian crossways, and pedestrian connections is a huge point of this. And, but, I mean, I go all the way back to the discussions we had when we first made this, this was three, four years ago, and we, Commissioner Caveney and I both had a lot of discussions on the dais, well, what happens, and we were trying to get... What's a linear path, let's get some movement, let's get spots of interest, and the developer gives it to you, they just basically make a sidewalk, and they make a little... That's our... There was nothing there. And so that's why, if we're really going to give mixed use, and I've mentioned this in the work group, I totally believe if this is the route that we are being developed as we are, then we should wipe out the need for a special use, high multifamily, and just say, so we're not making this farce, because right now, that's how I look at this document with these red lines, it's a farce. It truly is not trying to achieve mixed use. The idea of bringing multifamily into regional commercial was to spur development, to spur the ideas of mixing the two portions together, because regional commercial is hard to develop because how our shopping centers are coming down for, because we're losing it to the internet. And so we needed to get a good mix into that, and I was in favor of that, but we're not getting mixed use, we're getting apartment complexes. So if that's what we want as communities, apartment complexes, let's just do multifamily high and call it a day. I mean, that's how I look at this, with these type of red lines.
Your four minutes are up.
Yes.
No, I think we've had enough discussion, and I would propose that we really have kind of two options. The one, the one that's already been on the table, we could vote for that, and... But really, I am sure that this will not, we will miss at least three votes if we try to approve it with these red lines in here. And it may pass, but it will be missing three votes of approval. So we can either take the one that's already been proposed and vote on it, Chair, or we could propose if we felt like there were some red lines, we're willing to put those four paragraphs back in there of five of eight.
If we were looking at that direction before we make a motion, there's definitely other paragraphs that we want to remove from the red lines. A lot of the small verbiage, I see it loosens it up, but I'm not as much of changing a word here and there, but that's how I'd look at it.
So I'm fine with the document, except for, you know, that one particular paragraph that every, it's kind of a craw for everybody, and it's for each fact, it's the proposed project should contain five or more of the following methods to meet the... The reason I had an issue with that one being worded that way in the first place was, within each fact, it's thirty-two items, so... Five items, well, that's not totally accurate, there's really thirty-two items there, and you have to hit 20 of those. So it's more than 60%. And to me, to try and hit that amount of items per fact is, it's a little challenging sometimes for a developer to do that. And at the last meeting, I kind of was hoping this would go in the direction of a suggestion that I threw out there, was, you know, change that word to should to encourage, and instead of doing five of each fact, just have an overall of points that you might have to hit. So let's say, you know, for fact one, maybe they're hitting two, but fact five, they're hitting all eight, and they should be awarded for, rewarded for those types of methods. So, I mean, because it's asking for so many points within a fact, that's the only reason why I think I would support deleting that paragraph, I would like to see it come back into the document, but get worded in a certain way that it's not as handcuffed to the developer, and it gives the staff a lot of leniency to kind of work with the developer to get a good balance with the project. So just out of curiosity, like, when I think of these types of projects, the first one that's popping in my head is epicenter. Is that a rezone to RC to have that product in there?
Chairman Anderson, epicenter is a permitted use, it is called loft above in general commercial, which is permitted by Wright. It came in as a design review project, because the first floor is all retail.
Okay. But generally, is that type of product that would fit into, that's the intent for this RC zone, is something like that?
Yes, it actually is designed very well to meet these types of criteria.
Okay.
Can I respond to your thoughts?
Absolutely.
So my thoughts on the, because we did consider the aggregate number rather than the individual section, but the more I thought about it, in order to achieve a balance of the findings, it made sense to me to have that threshold in each section. Now, I'm okay with the should strive to achieve, that's one thing I can... Should strive to achieve, and I'm okay with that, because I'm more than willing, in a commission environment, to look at the conditions of the site, look at the effort of the developer in his effort to achieve, his striving to achieve, and adjudicate less than five. But I think there needs to be a substantial bar in order to make sure we get mixed use, because we're not getting it right now. So, and I'm afraid if we aggregate it, they're going to maybe get...
Well, and the other nice thing is, certain things hit across the boards in design. So like, if you're doing a vertical, you could get the 600, and you could get that it's vertical, I mean, one multiple categories, so you hit it once, and then, okay, you use that one, you know, you could get credit for one item across, you get four points for one idea.
Well, and frankly, some of them are very easy, too.
Right.
Some are kind of gimmies.
So what happens if a designer, architect, engineer, landkeep architect comes up with an idea that's not in here, do they get credit for that?
There is a line for that, where we will allow some proposals of, hey, we met, we did a different thing in this site, and let's say it's the connectivity, we did this, and it's something creative that we haven't thought of before, we are excited for that kind of stuff, we hope they do that, give them a point, absolutely. Yeah, 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 absolutely. And that's written in here, yeah. It's at the very end of each section, by the way. Chairman, I would recommend that we just move ahead and have a vote, because I think we've discussed it enough. Plus, we have additional study items that we need to hear and all of that, too.
Before we do so, are we going to have...
That's a good point, yes, okay.
Are we going to keep the same...
So, Commissioner Caveney, go ahead. May I propose that I modify to change the word should to should strive to achieve? I'm willing to do that, and I think it's fair, and I think it does create a little bit more latitude on the developer's side and on our side as a commission.
So just to make sure that's understood, you're saying we go back to the original document, we modify that one paragraph per fact that states what you just suggested?
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
And no other red lines?
No other red lines, yeah, included. You okay with that, Chairman?
I'm comfortable with that, I think that's fair to everybody.
I do, yeah. Okay, so Chairman, for the reasons set forth in the staff report, I move to recommend approval to the town council for Z171019, with only one modification to the original document, no other red lines included, except in each finding of fact where the word should meet five of eight is altered to read should strive to achieve five of eight.
Oh, I thought you did, but I'll second.
Second, my Commissioner Ayler, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Motion moves for recommend approval.
I'd like to add a nice tie you have, Nathan, since Chris isn't here. Appreciate that.
Okay, before I get to you, Nathan, let's just wrap up the rest of this here. Go to item 20, planning commission minutes, consider approval of the minutes of the study session, regular meeting, November 1st, 2017, is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Item 21, report from Chairman and members of the commission on current events, I have nothing, does anybody else have something? Not seeing any. Item 23, report from Planning Services Manager on current events.
I'm sorry.
Your turn to talk.
Oh, okay, well, I am sorry that, I am embarrassed that I wasn't listening. So most of all, happy, you know, Christmas to everyone and happy holidays, and we really do appreciate all of your expertise up here, I can't thank you enough for being leaders in our community, so thank you.
Thank you.
So most of all, happy, you know, Christmas to everyone and happy holidays. And we really do appreciate all of your expertise up here. I can't thank you enough for being leaders in our community. So thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll adjourn the public hearing. And we only have one item on study session, so I say we just keep going forward, bang it out and be done for the night.
And as always, I do have a conflict on that one, so I'm going to say goodnight to everybody.
Good.